April 4, 2019. This is the Rainham Planning Board. I call the meeting to order and I let everyone know that you are being audio and visually recorded. First up, Matria Subaru. Bob, do you know anything about this?
I was told that we were going to be here. We want to request, requesting a abbreviated site plan approval for an addition and creation of additional parking area. Why don't we put that to the end of the meeting?
We'll move on. Okay. Next up, we have a public hearing on Rainham Preserve East Open Space Subdivision. Is this our first hearing on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I got a public meeting notice right here. In accordance with provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A and 41, Section 81T and 81U, the Rainham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 4, 2009, 6:05 PM at Rainham Veterans Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street, on application for approval of a definitive plan submitted by applicant Rainham Preserve LLC, Robert F. Long, Manager, New Bedford, Mass; and owners Rainham Investment Realty Trust, Claire E. Harris, trustee; and Virgilio Perry and Kathleen Perry, trustees, Jocat Realty Trust, Rainham, Mass, for plan known as Rainham Preserve East, an open space preservation development proposing 28 lots on 39.7 acres of land located off the end of Bayberry Road. Applicants also seek special permit in accordance with Rainham Zoning Bylaws, Section 14.2B, to allow the open space preservation development and special permit in accordance with Section 16.4, to allow more than 10 building permits in a 12-month period, and to allow market conditions to dictate the rate of issuance of building permits. Plan is prepared by Prime Engineering, Lakeville, Mass. Locust property is Rainham Assessor's Map 9, Lot 197-4, Map 10, Lot 26-1B through 26-17B inclusive, Map 10, Lot 27-1B through 27-11B inclusive, and Map 10, Lot 17-0. Any person wishing to be heard or interested in the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. A complete copy of the plan and application may be viewed at the Rainham Town Clerk's Office or Planning Board Office, 558 South Main Street, Rainham during regular office hours. Rainham Planning Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Evan Watson. I'm from Prime Engineering. I represent the applicant, Long-Built Homes. With me tonight is Lee Cassig Netti, Vice President of Land Development and Counsel for Long-Built Homes. As said in the advertisement, we are presenting a Form C subdivision and special permit for an open space preservation development off the end of Bayberry.
Okay, for the people at home, will you point out some streets around there so everybody knows what we're talking about?
Sure, yeah. I'll kind of step through. I have, I brought the plans with me, but I have a few exhibits to help us understand where we are and what it is we're doing. So, this plan north is actually facing this way.
Do we have our laser?
We do. Oh, you won't get it, sorry.
Did you want the laser or?
No, you want for me. Don't forget to return it.
Very good. So, here we have Route 495, Route 24. So, we're in the part of town that's in between 495 and 24 and south of Pleasant Street. Neighborhoods such as Whipperwill are here off of Locust Street. This is King. And then we have the Rainham Preserve, which is a project Long-Built Homes is actually building homes in right now. On the top of the page is Bayberry, so you would come in off of Pleasant Street, down Bayberry, and then you come to the project area, which we're calling Rainham Preserve East. And the reason for that is when the Rainham Preserve was first permitted, it was part of the Basset Knoll subdivision, and this parcel was actually part of that. Now, we've since developed this into an open space project. So, part of that, we have the lots here at Rainham Preserve, and then all through the middle, we have our open space.
And for people at home, what does an open space preserve mean?
So, an open space preservation development, what that does is we essentially, and I have a few exhibits to kind of help us to understand that. Basically, you look at the parcel, you find what your actual yield would be if you did a conventional subdivision with no waivers. Then you look at the-
By yield is how many?
We have 28 lots.
How many lots you could build?
So, just to refresh our memory, we were here before the board, ways back with a preliminary subdivision plan. This is the wrong one. This is actually before we incorporated the peri-parcels. But we did a subdivision which showed that we could do conventionally, and then, oh, here it is. So, then we included the adjoining parcel, and we grouped together. And with this plan, we were able to demonstrate that we could do 28 lots conventionally. So, then what we do, so here's the existing conditions plan. And we look at the property for features that are most suited for development, and we try to pick out the best spot for those 28 lots. So, on this plan, you can see that we have 495 up here, and down here, I have highlighted the wetland resource areas. And this yellow line is the 100-foot buffer zone, and the pink line is the 25-foot no-touch. So, the most logical space to do development on this parcel would be as far away from the resource areas as we could go, but also trying to keep a good buffer away from Route 495. And if we're going to provide open space, connect it to the existing open space with the other properties nearby. Once we do that, we basically look at the regulation, and it allows us to reduce the size of the lots. So, we're allowed to go to, I believe it's 20,000 square feet lots. And then the remaining land that would have gone to the lots then becomes open space altogether instead of like small little groups of trees like in between that are privately owned. And that's the same way that both Rainham Preserve and Whipperwill were developed. So, you see the homes are clustered a little bit closer together, but beyond everybody's backyards, there's all sorts of open woods and open space.
This piece of land is how many acres?
This piece of land is, it's 35.4.
39.8.
Yeah, 39.8. So, that's, that number was the original parcel, but with the addition of the peri-parcels, the 39.8. I had that on another.
So, it's 40 acres, and how many acres will get built on, and how many acres will remain in natural state?
That brings me to the next. So, this is the, what we've come up with for the actual development. And I've put the summary table here. So, it's 39.8 acres that we have, and the subdivision parcel will be 19 and 1/2 acres, and then the open space will be 23.9 acres. So, this plan basically shows what I was describing is that we've, after we looked at where the good areas for development are, we brought our road, system of roadways in. From that, we've then placed the house to access the roadways, and then we drew the lot lines around them. So, a couple of features of the design that we have here is, number one is the open space. So, it's a contiguous parcel. You can get in from Bayberry and go all the way around the tract. The detention basins are within the open space, and then this area down here actually connects to the rest of the open space from Rainham Preserve and to Whipperwill. As you come into the road, we have a little turnoff to both access the open space and for mailbox, because the post office with new subdivisions, they want to have a gang mailbox. Then we continue down to an intersection with a small cul-de-sac that goes down here, and it terminates there. So, it's essentially an extension of Bayberry Road. We did receive a waiver when we were here with the preliminary plan. We discussed having the length of the road exceed the maximum length of road in the regs based on, this was approved prior to that. So, we were maintaining the same rules there. And the actual length of the road here is, again, just, it's less than what was approved from before. I don't have those figures in front of me, but that was discussed at the last, the last meeting. So, a couple of features here. We have approximately 200 feet from 495 to the rear lots, the rear lots. There is an interceptor swale here that picks up any drainage and brings it down to the drainage ponds. We need to do a little clearing there. But it's still about 170 feet of woods from the right-of-way to the actual edge of the woods. The detention facilities, we're trying to incorporate that into some of the amenities of the open space. So, you can see here, I have it colored in blue, and that's because we've actually designed these as wet ponds. I actually live in town. I grew up in Bridgewater, and it's not uncommon to have some of these smaller mill ponds or some of the old areas where they, you know, dug them out to make bog iron or whatnot. So, I thought it'd be a nice feature to incorporate into this subdivision to be similar to the other areas in town. So, we would have a small, about quarter acre pool here, and then down here is about one acre of a wet pond. And I would expect that both of these would have fish in them and be able, be in a, something that you would want to go and go for a walk around or go take a look and enjoy.
Speaking of a walk around, are there walking paths around the back of the houses or anything?
We didn't propose any walking paths right now. And I'd imagine, sometimes we put walking paths in projects, and then you go talk to the residents and say, hey, how do you like the walking path? And they go, a walking path? What are you talking about? So, right now on this plan, I did not propose walking paths, but I do think that it would be a nice feature to basically join all the different open space parcels and at some point have, you know, there is an opportunity there to have a nice walking path.
Okay. Anything else for basics?
I'm sorry?
And for basics, anything else?
For the basics, that's it in a nutshell. We have received some comment from the water department. There is adequate water. They asked me to revise the location of the water line on the plan.
So, it can be a dead-end line?
It would, yeah. We are proposing a dead-end line now. So, we didn't receive any comment, any negative comment from the water department with that.
Okay.
Sewer is available. There's a terminal manhole here at the end of Bayberry Road. It was our initial intent to have the whole subdivision on a low-pressure pump system, where each individual house would have a, its own pump. But through some talks with the superintendent, he asked that we try and minimize the number of pumps that we would have. So, that's why we actually fill the road. The road, you know, keeps coming up until about here, so we can carry the sewer by gravity. And then the two bulbs here would actually have the grinder pumps for the low-pressure force main. That actually was submitted to the sewer department, and that's under review by-
Time Bond?
Yeah. So, we're waiting to hear back from them as to any comments they might have. We do have natural gas, and there are underground utilities available from Bayberry, so we would continue both the gas and underground electric.
Okay. Board members have any questions yet?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, Keith Horizon is here. We'll go through our questions, and then he'll go to the audience, all right? When this originally was approved, and we took, we had, Mr. Harris came in to do this as a cluster development. It was originally approved, and then we had a lot of debate about being able to develop, if the time was a factor or what have you. When that was originally approved, I'm looking at all of these waivers. We have a ton of waivers being asked for the rules and regs. What was originally approved on the original plan for waivers?
When you see.
Well, again, let's, let's, let's go back. We go back to the original, if we go back to the original approval, when-
Mr. Harris was in front of us, and he said, if you can build it, go ahead and build it. Right, as the 30, the original 30-lot subdivision.
The original 30-lot subdivision. He said, if you can build it, go ahead, go and build it.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. You may recall, when we were trying to deal with the issue of the waiver of the street length, we tried-
But that was, that was the part that we had voted and agreed upon.
Correct. What I'm saying was when we were doing the historical, trying to do the historical reconstruction to determine whether or not a waiver had been granted for that, we couldn't find a record of any waivers. So, I can't, I can't answer.
No, because it wasn't as far, and it wasn't at that time.
Yeah.
And that's what I-
But we couldn't find any waivers. That's what I'm saying. So, I, on the original plan, I can't, I don't know. I don't know how, what waivers were granted, requested or-
Because the, if we go back to the beginning, that's where we started with this. You are in front of us for a cluster development, but you, you were starting from an original plan that was prior, previously approved.
Correct, which was not a cluster.
Which was not a cluster.
Yes, it was a conventional.
And then we had the other parcel that we, the board let you incorporate-
Correct.
And make that change. And I'm not sure with making that change, what other, what other waivers are you asking for now versus what was originally approved? That's what I'm, so if we're going, if we, because again, I'm looking at this, the only reason why it's here is because we agreed from the very beginning that you had the right to come and build that subdivision.
So, on the original-
Let me finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me see the lease appointment. So, we might have to get out the original approved plan at the next meeting and figure out, because since then, now, this whole thing was approved, but since then, we did a waiver of frontage, kind of circumventing the law. We got a variance here, and they built the house back here. We split this up, and we got another subdivision with all the rules and regs waived here. We kind of circumvent that law, and then we have another one down here. So, we have three more lots that don't have the required frontage, but they went to the zoning board of appeals and got a waiver. So, I guess, how do those three lots affect this plan? Do you have more lots than you originally did from that original plan? Because those three lots only have, what, 50-foot frontage?
We, I, we never owned any of that land. I have no idea.
But that was all the original approval. Because if you look back on those deeds, they say that that was, the original approval says that the land is to be combined with Lot A or Lot 1, Lot 2. And then they, what they did is they went and got variances, saying that this will never be built. So, now that this is in front of us, I'm not sure how that plays. And I think one of the gentlemen is over here who lives in one of those houses that has the variance, and maybe when he speaks, he can. So, that's my question and my concern. The other, you say you're not going to have any walking trails or for the open space or anything, nothing's outlined to you?
No, there's nothing shown in, present with this. Something that's not on there.
Well, I think-
If you want walking trails and a discussion as to where you would, you want them, not that we won't do.
My concern, Mr. Chairman, is we have an extensive list here of waivers from the rules and the regs. And I think on our next public hearing, we ought to have, put on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we put on the agenda to discuss our rules and regs in respects to waivers, because we're getting conflicting information from the new chairman about not allowing rules and regs. So, I'm just trying to figure out. I printed out a couple of, couple items that we can look at. And it's waivers and restrictions for rules and regs, Lot, I think it's a window. And then it says, purpose of the bylaw, subdivision bylaw. So, I guess before we continue with this, if we're not going to, if we're going to change our, the board's role or responsibilities, or if we're going to change our view on what we're going to be doing going forward on plans that come in front of this board, whether I'm the chairman, you're the chairman, or somebody else is the chairman, then I think we need to discuss that. It should be placed on the next agenda. So, I'd like to make a motion that we put discussion of our waivers or rules and regs on April 18 meeting before we approve any more waivers or plans with waivers.
Well, I'll second that. Any discussion among board members, or are we happy to have that discussion on the 18th?
Sounds good.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. I agree this, that this is, you know, an open space subdivision. It's supposed to be kind of strictly construed because the house lots are half the size, and people are packed in a lot closer. And it seems like in it, there's an excessive amount of waivers, but we will discuss that after we have our discussion next week. Anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yeah, just a comment on the waivers. When you read the regulations for the open space bylaw, it almost recommends that the applicant ask for waivers to-
Doesn't.
It, it allows the board to waive certain requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations to provide for an open space subdivision which has less impact on the land. So, where your subdivision rules and regulations say that you want a 28-foot wide road with sidewalks on both sides, that creates an abundance of impervious area. So, we would then ask for a reduction-
Well, you don't have to, keep going. I, I think the Massachusetts State bylaws is, is exactly what you're saying. So, I think this board just has to decide which, how we're going to be directing engineers and applicants in the future. Just so we have the same information that everybody's getting, that's, that's my only concern.
Yeah, so that's, we're obviously coming, we are asking for multiple waivers.
I agree, I agree on himself.
Yep, and they are, I will say, most of them are based on the drainage facilities. And again, to try and bring them into, and then, and we could get into the reasons why I'm asking for waivers if you want to.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Or if that goes to the next one.
I think you have a list of things here you need to work out with Niche. Have you had time to review this, Bob?
I was receiving it this morning, Lieutenant. So, we took a look at it. I was, I actually thought it was pretty favorable to us, to be honest with you. He actually recommends granting many of the waivers that we're asking for.
Oh, that's another issue. Our new chairman doesn't like our engineer to make comments on his things, so we might have to talk about that too. So.
But in each section, basically, he has a few comments here and there, and then he says, you know, he, he's, let me just, there's a few, in general, the plan declared to comply with the zoning bylaws, except for noted above. And then he goes through the subdivision rules and regs, and at the end, in summary-
Why would we listen to him now?
Well, I'm sorry.
Why would we listen to him?
Your consultant. I didn't hire him. We didn't, we didn't-
You hired him for that purpose, I thought.
Thank you. So, the bit of subdivision plan appears to conform to the town rules and regulations, zoning bylaws, except as noted. They recommend we address the comments in writing and resubmit revised plans and calculations for review. So, Lee and I had the discussion. We read through this, and we were looking for something from the review that was basically going to say, please redesign your subdivision, because it doesn't conform in any way. We were not able to find any of that. There was a few things, like he wants us to get input from the other town departments.
Well, again, I think, I think with the three lots that were on the original plan, I think that needs some more investigation.
Yeah.
Only because, only because, the only reason why this is in front of us is because it was originally approved. That's why it was, that's why it was to this point. It was originally approved from an original subdivision. But since then, since I looked at it, now I see that there's three house lots that have been built with lack of frontage, with waivers, with a variance. So, I'm not sure how that plan from the original approval affects this one.
Right. Maybe I can offer some clarification for that. So, this subdivision that comes off of Pleasant Street, the Bayberry, Ramshead, and Paddock Road, was done under one subdivision plan for one owner, for one developer. This project over here was not part of that, or they were not part of the same owner, and it was not under the same permit. This extension of the road was put there to then allow for future development by this other owner, who then came and developed and permitted the Basset Knoll subdivision. So, any of this land this way was never, these were not combined in one permit at any time.
So, on that, so on, when there's language on that plan that got the, basically, a one-lot subdivision, and says it's to be combined with lot or land owned by so-and-so, that's not land this way? That's somewhere else?
I haven't read the plan, but-
All right. Well, maybe we should look at that.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
But as far as I could tell, when we did the research for this subdivision, this was always a completely separate entity.
That's all I, that's all I have.
Bob, do you have anything?
I was already going to suggest that they, they take, make, and address all the, all the things that Niche has on his, on his report, come back and make any revisions that are on the report, and then line by line, explain to the board how you've changed your plan or how your plan meets what Mr. Niche has in his, in his report. So, once you addressed Niche's report, you know, come back and explain to the board how you addressed it. We'll probably have a revised letter from him at that time, and then you can move forward from that point.
And I will add, I'll say it this different way, but to me, your open space and the amount of expense, you don't have building roads, et cetera, is already a big waiver. And so, to want a couple pages of waivers past that is probably something I'm not going to go along with. Sir, you've been patient.
My name's Dave Karen.
Would you come up here, please, to the mic, because I can't hear you at home.
Yeah.
I know I want it, but I'll take it. Take it.
My name's Dave Karen. I live at the end of Paddock Road, 1st Street, 4th.
Um. You point, so you're at the very end of the suburb with the pump?
I'm right here.
Okay.
You're one that got the variance for the-
I did.
Waiver frontage or-
I did.
Was that a subdivision?
We were the leftover space from the end of Paddock Road. We were the leftover space from the end of Paddock Road.
But, the plan was, it was put in as a subdivision?
No.
What, it wasn't?
Nope, it was just a single home.
Okay.
So, my question is, how much of this area will we be clearcutting?
Mr. Chairman, if I can answer that?
You may.
Yeah. So, because we need to elevate the road for the sewer, we actually, and, again, because it's an open space, the concept here is to leave the area around the house lots with all the trees, but it doesn't leave a lot of opportunity to leave much in the actual development site, basically based off of the high water table and, you know, how we have to elevate everything. So, the area that you see around the house lots will essentially be cleared of trees. We'll be planting new trees along the boulevard, you know, along the street, but all of this area will remain, and that's basically part of the open space.
So, this upper area is going to remain?
Yes, so, from this line to Route 495, I can use the pointer, so I don't block the So, this line here is basically the limited clearing to the east, and this line here is the limited clearing to the west. So, your house being here, all of this will still remain.
Okay. I'm just curious, because that obviously is a big buffer for us in that subdivision with the noise of the highway. The other question I guess I have on clearcutting, when you did your sewer line from your subdivision to Paddock Road, you cut a 100-foot line in order to put a pipe in. So, that's why I'm a little itchy about how much clearcutting you're gonna be doing. To date, that line has not been finished, and we've got a huge pile of dirt on it and a bunch of debris. On the end of Paddock Road, I have a bunch of construction materials that I've had there since you paved that back in October. So, I'm just curious-
Where, where are you speaking of?
134 Paddock Road.
No, I mean, he's on the bottom where the-
I, I know where your house is, but where, where's the pile of debris and stuff?
The pile of debris is right here. I stacked it all up for them, because I figured they'd swing by and clean it up sometime.
Was that your building, or your-
No.
Nothing to do with you?
When Mr. Harris was alive, he came in front of us, came back in front of us, as you know, back, all the issues we were having over there. He made that cul-de-sac at the end, not to the required, not to the size that was approved. So, we had a meeting out there and between him and Highway, and we came up with a solution to make it so it works, and the sewer department was happy with it. So, they did all that, and I believe, I saw, they put grass, did some grass, did silt fence and all that, all that stuff. So, again, I'm not sure, since he's passed away, and I know that Longbuilt is taking over for the other part of the subdivision, I'm not sure. We still have to figure out.
Well, I guess that's my question.
Right, we have to figure out who's responsible-
Who's responsible to finish this project?
And maybe-
Because I don't see it getting done anytime soon.
Lee, can you answer? You, you have Mrs. Claire, she signed a document giving you power of attorney, I believe.
But, she still owns the property.
She owns the property.
Correct, and her relationship with the, with the board is unchanged at this juncture.
Okay, all right. So, are you, who does the town, who do we get in touch with besides you? Because like, we talked about even before this, we said we have to get back into who's, who's our communicator before this project's even half-done. So, we don't, are not looking at each other saying that you're not gonna finish it, and he's not gonna finish it.
Drop it.
Yeah, why don't you go up there, just so we can resolve that, and then we all know, yeah. Because it's gonna come, it's gonna come up sometimes, we might as well, glad he brought it up, because, Bob, we're gonna have to, you know, we'll have to get the information of who's actually in charge on the other side.
Yeah.
And I know you were taking over the roads.
We don't own it. Under the, under our contract, we had the right of self-help, self-help. And obviously, in light of Nick's death, we've undertaken to, to utilize that, and we are now building the Phase 3 roadway. The way the, the deal is structured is, we close on lots when the lots are released and buildable. Obviously, now with Nick's death, you know, that, that was all well and good, is what was intended, and hasn't really played out fully that way. So, what we're gonna do, that's why I said she is still the responsible party, because she's still, all we've ever bought is lots. She still owns the 25 Phase 3 lots, as well as all the roadways. So, what we're gonna do when we, when we close on the Phase 3 lots, we're gonna actually take title to the roadways as well, and then we will appear before you to explain that we now own it, and we're, we're gonna take over the responsibility to complete the roads.
Okay, we should do this now?
We don't own them right now, though, so we can't-
We should request, we probably should have done a long time ago.
After Mr. Harris passed, we should be requesting a letter to Claire and asking her for updated information, as who's our contact, who's responsible for the roads, we need phone numbers. Because again, that's all well and good, but it's not done. Something happens, then, you know, we need the information. I know through the inspection process, with Nitch being out there, and Bob, and Ed Buckley, you know, you've been showing up, but again-
Us and Jim Lanigan, from JB Lanigan and Company.
Right.
They're building the road.
Right. And again, you are there representing her, but we, I think we need that to be put on paper, so we know exactly.
Mr. Buckley may already have the information, so I'll-
Well, maybe just check, then, if, and then Maureen won't have to, because it's gotta be something, you know, notarized that she's, because again, this is, this is a big project, and the town can really be left with quite a mess at the end if we're chasing-
It won't be, I promise you, it will not be.
No, and I, and I trust you, you know, I, everything you've told us so far as a person, I have no problem with you. That's why we told Nick to sit down several times and let you do the talking, but, you know, the town just has to protect themselves-
Without question, without question.
For the long run.
Fully understood, and agreed.
Where did, where did he go?
I'm still here.
Oh, I can't see you back there. So, that'll, we'll get the answers to that.
Okay.
And I know our-
Because when that line was put in, I had no access to my house for two years. I had cars in my driveway every night.
When the access was put in?
Yeah.
What access?
When the sewer line for that pump station was put in.
Oh.
I had to go to the sewer commission-
Yeah, I don't even know how you got a, I don't even know how you got a building permit, to be honest with you, for-
I had to go to this-
A lot that doesn't meet any of the zoning requirements, but that's, that's not a-
That was only done 20 years ago, sir.
20?
Yeah.
Well, again, I, I don't know, it's, it's-
Are we here to discuss my house? Were we discussing the subdivision project?
It's all part of the same, as far as I'm concerned, it's all part of the same project, because it's all, it was approved, we have plans on file that show that. But, anyway.
So, my concern is, when that was put in, I had to go to the sewer commission to get some help with the issues I was facing on that property. So, I'm just kinda concerned, now that the sub, that, now that the pump station is in, who am I gonna go to to have it finished? And I'm concerned for the people on the other side-
To have what finished?
Well, this line that runs back to the subdivision isn't finished.
The line or the grading, or the grass?
The grading.
Yeah, well, I think that's what we-
And the silt fence is still in.
Right, well, I think that's what we were just talking about.
The retention pond that was here has doubled in size since before they started. So, I'm just kinda curious, who am I supposed to be going to, to have these discussions now?
Are you on, is, is that portion of the road accepted by the town?
I don't know. Paddock Road, I don't think any of the subdivision is accepted by the town.
No, it's gotta be.
I don't think so.
And so, that line serves as Sparrow and Goldvich. At some point, they're gonna come in looking for road acceptance, so we'll make sure at that time that all those improvements that are related to those two streets have been completed. So, Dave, when that happens, that's when we're gonna make sure that that gets completed the way it's shown on the approval plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, when they're coming, when they're coming in, which will, I would imagine, be sooner than later, because they're not gonna wanna maintain those roads once they're finished, we'll make sure that all those improvements on that plan, which includes that sewer line, are totally complete.
Thank you.
Do you wanna come back in two weeks?
Yeah, we've wanted to discuss the waivers at least, and, you know, I don't know if we'll have everything done, sent to Steve and Paul.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable talking about the waivers until next time.
No, that's right, yeah, at the next, at the next hearing, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if they'd be ready in two weeks.
Yeah.
But, because we're, we're just reading the stuff now, too.
Yeah, I think that it would be a good opportunity to read through what he has there, and although the list may be long, I think that it's, the actual substance there might not be too heavy.
Okay. John, you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
You can read the plans, all right?
Yeah, I see them.
Okay, we will continue this hearing. April 18th at 6:30? Yes?
Yes.
We're just talking about the order of things. As Bob had suggested about making the changes, and then, you know, resubmitting the changes with the, with the revisions, would you not want us to make those changes and send them to Nitch first with the changes?
I wouldn't, I myself wouldn't want you to make any changes.
I would-
We have to look at the original, I have to look at the original plans that were, that we originally were working off of.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only reason why we're here. And if there's something that's not the same, or if the waivers, you said there's no waiver list, the whole thing, like, you know, going back to what I said earlier, this has all been based on preapproval. That's how we, you were able to get this many lots, and then you added those few extras. So, I just have to get past that, that part of it myself.
Okay.
So, I wouldn't make any changes at this time.
All right. So, then, I can't really answer your question for two weeks. I think Dan has to answer that question.
Well-
Well, I think we have to look at the original plans.
We're gonna look at waivers, we're gonna look at the plans as they exist now, Nitch's comments. If you wanna come back in two weeks.
Yeah, I would. I would come back in two weeks, just to be-
Something to talk about.
On the agenda, so.
All right.
So, would you want him to address the comments but not change the plan?
What's he changing, what is he changing the plan to?
To address the comments in Nitch's letter.
So, just address, address the comments on paper, but have it not reflected in the plan until you decide?
That's what I say, because if we don't approve of a couple of these waivers, he might be redoing the plan anyway.
Just to give him some direction, so that he can get something accomplished in the next two weeks.
It's always a good thing.
Yeah, I don't see that they have a lot to do in the next two weeks, other than going over Nitch's comments, maybe asking some questions of Nitch. That's why I figured two weeks is enough time, and then we will do some reading, too.
Okay.
So, I continue the public hearing to April 18th, 2019, at 6:30. I guess we'll take a vote on that, second?
In favor. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Public hearing abbreviated site plan, Terrell Road?
Yep, another public, may you notice here. In accordance with provisions of Master and the laws, Chapter 48, and Article 13 of Rainham zoning bylaws, the Rainham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 4th, 2019, at 6:15 PM, at Rainham Veterans Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street, on abbreviated site plan applications submitted by Barnett, Bornstein, Rainham Mass for roadway improvements to Terrell Road, including extension of water and sewer, to support Form A division of property into three buildable lots. Improvements when completed will remove previous restrictions of property imposed by ZBA because of inadequacy of the right of way. Locust 869 Locust Street, Assessor's Map 12, Lot 239K, Rainham Mass. Copy of application and plan are available for viewing at the Town Clerk's Office and Planning Board Office, 558 South Main Street. During usual scheduled business hours, any person wishing to be heard or interested in this submittal should appear at the time and place designated. Rainham Planning Board, Chris Gallagher, Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Larry Silva from Silver Engineering Associates, offices at 1615 Bedford Street in Bridgewater. And I'm here this evening-
Hold on.
Okay. And with me this evening is Mr. Bornstein. So, really what we have tonight-
I bet our audiovisual guy could get a closer-up of that plan.
There he goes.
Here we go, yeah, there we go.
I need to lug green trees up.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We're all zoomed in.
Yep.
Okay. Some time ago, we, we met with the board in an informal manner.
I'm sorry, I know where we are, but for people at home, Terrell Road, where's Locust Street, where's Justin Street?
Locust Street is to the, can I use your pointer?
There you go.
Yeah, I guess I should bring my one, man. So, this is the cul-de-sac, Terrell Road, then there is a part, part of it that was extended to this area here, a couple of homes along that stretch, and Locust Street is over here. So, what we're talking about is from the area where the Ben Miller house is, we're talking about the area from there over to this land here. This is the land that we've submitted to a Form A. Okay, and as you know, it's for to divide the existing parcel into three lots. And as you, as you know, there are three criteria for Form A. One is that the lots have the proper frontage, the second is that they have the proper area, and the third is that they have an adequate way in order to be able to access it. So, in this particular case, we have a second submittal to you, which is for roadway improvements, which what we're proposing to you is, in order to satisfy the adequacy of the way, that we have to make some improvements to the roadway itself in order to ask that the board endorse the Form A plan. So, it's an endorsement of the Form A plan, but it's an approval of the roadway improvements.
So, where's the roadway improvement information?
Okay, so, the road, they were both submitted to you. I can show you the plan sets we have, but you have them there.
We must have the plan here. Anybody got a plan on the roadway? Maureen?
I don't have, no.
So, this is a Form A.
I think it's not a form A.
This is a plan? The improvements are on page two. Thought you all had a plan, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, I have an extra one.
I wanna give them one.
Nope, that's not it.
So, now, why would you do a Form, just a question, why would you do a Form A and a roadway improvement? Why wouldn't you have them on the roadway improvement part?
Thank you.
I mean, it's basically-
Because they're, they're really two different animals. Well, roadway improvement- The roadway improvement plan is to basically create a situation where the accessway meets the criteria for being adequate, and the Form A is for the actual legal subdivision of the three properties. So that's the reason why they're there, but there's actually wording on the Form A plan which indicates that it's contingent upon the roadway improvements.
So you wouldn't approve the Form A plan unless you-
Oh, no, I know, that's why I'm saying, I wonder why we have a Form A plan. I mean, it almost seems like a good idea doing it this way, and again, I'm thinking a year down the road, two years, when somebody else comes in front of us, is that the better way of doing, having a roadway plan? Is, now, you're having a roadway plan, but this isn't a subdivision plan.
No, it's a roadway improvements plan to support-
So you don't have to, so you're not coming in with subdivision control law?
We're coming in for approval required planned by the planning board for the roadway improvements. So that part of it requires approval by the board. Once you agree that that is okay-
I like this a lot better than what we've done in the past, because we've always, it's always come in as a subdivision, with all these waivers. On a subdivision, that's on an existing road.
Are on an existing public road.
It's an existing road, an ancient way.
Ancient way.
Yeah, it's not a road.
But that isn't adequate, and we say, well, since the road is inadequate, you have to make it adequate. That's a road improvement plan.
Well, it's always come in as a subdivision plan with the lots.
Well, ancient ways and public ways shouldn't come in that way.
No, I think that's how we used to do it, I don't know. I could be wrong. I just, this is the first time I've seen it like this, although-
Most of the ones we've done lately, the two and three lot, four lot subdivisions have been private ways.
Yeah, no, no, I'm talking like Sandy Hill, I thought that was, didn't that come in as a subdivision, basically, with showing the lots on that plan with the improvements on the road?
No, he never really subdivided lots off of his parcel, he just got access to his parcel on the approved way.
So he did, all right.
So basically, there's two components to this one.
All right, no, that's good.
If, so put it this way, if that was just a single piece of land that we were trying to get access to, then maybe a single plan showing that would be the right way to do that. But because we're doing a division of it in a Form A process, that's why we have them separately. Okay, so in this plan here, as you can see up here, and I'll show you the detailed ones, but this here up above has a summary of what we're looking to do here. So the Terrell Road improvements, it's approximately 670 feet of roadway extension, okay, which consists of an 18-foot gravel with a recycled surface, recycled asphalt, asphalt over an eight-inch base, gravel base, and then on either side, two-foot crushstone shoulder, and that, and this, it comes back from that conversation that we had before about what would be the minimum standard for that, for the improvement. Now, the water and sewer improvements, the sewer, it's 640 feet of new eight-inch gravity sewer with three new sewer manholes in order to go along the stretch. And we had proposed 680 feet of new water line, okay, with, there's this additional 300 feet that the water department is looking to have added to that. Okay? We kinda look at that as being excessive, because it really is going beyond what we're doing. What they're looking to do is to have, is to have this 300 feet go from where we're ending here to go tie into a project that we don't even know whether or not the guy's ever going forward with it. You know, because that's the guy that was gonna come in from Locust Street and come down that way, I don't know, I forgot what the name of the guy was. But he was coming in that way. Well, if he were to come in that way, maybe there'd be some discussion about it. The water department was concerned about the length of the water main here, but I mean, I just heard a conversation about the big subdivision that was having a dead-end water main in it, and we're talking about this little piece here that he's looking to have it tied all the way to Locust Street.
Now, are you doing, putting a hydrant at the end of your line?
Yeah, so we have a hydrant proposed, so-
Where is water now at each end?
At each end, you mean?
Yeah, where on Terrell Road is the water?
Water ends right here.
Okay.
Okay, and so we're talking about bringing it up, extending it with a hydrant.
And from the other direction, Locust Street, does it come in at all?
No, doesn't come in at all from Locust now.
Okay, so you want to put in how much?
So we were saying is that along the stretch that we're gonna do these improvements, you know, that we'd be going, it's basically 680 or 670, it's a little bit more, 680 feet of new water line, you know, with the hydrant that would be there also.
Okay, but you would do from where to where if we do your-
Would be along this whole stretch right here, where you see the blue line right in here?
Yep.
Up to here.
Okay.
Okay, the same area that we're doing the green line, which is a sewer.
Okay.
But they're looking for us to go a little extra all the way down to here, 300 feet.
Why do they want the extra 300 feet if that's-
Because they're anticipating the other line's gonna come from Locust Street, and they want us to tie it as well.
I see.
I had a conversation with them, and they don't want two dead-end lines when there's a possibility to connect them in the middle. And it's not up to the planning board to waive the requirements of the water and sewer department, so if that's what they want, you're gonna have to discuss it with them.
Yeah, and that's what's gonna have to happen. So we're showing what their comments were, and that they're saying that they want that additional footage.
Okay.
And we would like them to work with, I would like them to work with Mr. Bornstein, and maybe they can work out a deal for that extra 300 feet, maybe the water department can provide the water and the line itself and fittings for that extra 300 feet, and he puts it in, and now he doesn't have a dead-end line anymore. I think all we're looking for is to be some fairness in terms of the burden that he has to go through in order to get the three lots, because if you look at this, this is, you know, it's pretty substantial in terms of the amount of work that has to be done to do this. So what, in the other, in the actual set of plans that goes with this-
Could you go over the sewer again, because I was, it took me a while to digest the water and where we were.
Okay. So for the sewer, the sewer line ends right here.
Okay.
So we're gonna continue an eight-inch gravity line all the way up to here.
Okay, so the existing house is gonna be able to tie in the water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
You would have to, based on the size of the lots you left there?
Yes.
Yeah, because when we do this division, it requires to have either or. It actually doesn't require to have both, it has either or, right?
One or the other.
One or the other.
Okay.
So, so that's what's being proposed, and then on the road improvement plans themselves, the details are all shown there, and-
So yes, sewer's gonna be all gravity?
Yes, it is. So the gravity sewer line, I'll show you the profile. So this is the existing sewer main here, there's a drop inlet in here, but then it follows, the contours in here coming up this way here. So basically, following pretty much existing grade down, keeping the sewer down, gravity flow all the way down, and then dropping in here where it ends right here. And quite honestly, anything beyond that point, I mean, you still got some room in here if you were going further, but anything beyond here is actually gonna be carried from Locust Street anyway. You know what I'm saying, it's not like sewer lines are gonna tie together, you know what I'm saying, so. But that's-
I think we already have, the other one coming from Locust Street already has an approval. I think they did this water and sewer coming from that other side.
Right.
So.
Right, so I mean, there's really not a need to go really anywhere beyond that point. And so that's, and so, and as far as what we're doing is, we're pretty much following the existing contours that are there. You can see in here, there's just, this is the existing contour right in here. So we're pretty much, except for this little hump in here, and this little dip in here, we're basically just even that, evening it out. So that, because we're not trying to change any real drainage situation there, everything is gonna be crowned and going off the shoulders where we got the crushed stone on each side, so that it all-
I took a ride out there, and I was really surprised how narrow it was.
Yeah, so this, you know, so this gets a chance for it to, you know, to get to the 22 feet overall, 18 travel surface and the two-foot shoulders on each side.
There's a tree, I had to go around a little tree there to get out, to get through. You're gonna do this improvement. Do you own, who's, I know when you came in from the other side, you started doing some clearing and, you know-
This is all within the layout of the road.
Okay, so it's all, it's all-
It's all within the layout.
It's within the layout.
Can I speak to that for you?
Would you state your name for the record?
Barney Bornstein. I actually talked to my neighbor that owns the property along the road on the other side. It almost goes, his property goes pretty much to where the improvement is that I'm looking to do. And as of yesterday, he said if there's any trees in there, there's like a row of trees that is still standing, we discussed removing all those trees, and then that one that you talked to, we're removing that, so kinda straightening out the road a little bit, and making it more accessible.
And again, I'm only asking because when you were cutting those trees down, I think we were all getting phone calls, like, you know, where's my tree's going down, and so I think, just so, if there are people that own across the street, just notify them that you're gonna mark it all out anyway.
Yeah, and it's pretty much, Bemilla owns pretty much the other side. It's part of his land.
And that was mostly brush.
Is Terrell Road two rods wide, or?
Yeah, two rods.
Okay.
Yes, I got a couple of questions. When do you anticipate the two owners of these new houses are gonna access their home from? Are they gonna come through the cul-de-sac, or are they gonna come off of Locust Street?
I'll be one of them.
Sure.
I'll be one of them. I plan to occupy or live in the one closest to the cul-de-sac.
So you're gonna build a house for yourself on Lot 3, how do you think you're gonna access on a daily basis?
I was planning on Terrell Road.
You're gonna go through the subdivision all the way around, and come through Terrell Road subdivision, through the cul-de-sac, past Mr. Bemilla's house type property?
I actually cut through there all the time, and half that neighborhood down there, cut through that.
Even where you live now, you do the same thing?
Most of the time I'll go up there, but a lot of time, maybe a third of the time, I'll go up, depends on where I'm going this time.
My other question is, if the improvements for the lot off of Locust Street that's already been approved and permitted, if those improvements were made at the end of his 150 feet of frontage, you've extended a road, if you extend a road back to get to your Lot 3, is it less of a roadway than what you propose in this plan?
It's, we have a sense right now.
Can we put a plan up, just so we can see where-
You understand my question?
They do. And that's why I wanna put a plan up, because if there's another property owner in between there, then it gives us the advantage of-
I'll show you. There's a permit for a lot that's back in here. Okay, you've given this guy permission to build a road approximately 500 feet long to get to this lot here. My question is, if this improvement was made to this point here, is this street from here to here less than what he's proposing from here to here? Have you done that math?
Well, can I finish?
Yeah, you're good, go ahead. I understand it's based on him getting his work done.
That's one problem. The other problem is that I'll have to put two E1 pumps to pump the service out to his line. So we wouldn't be putting in the service line, the gravity fit line. If we went the other way, we would be just tying it to his thing. It's about 800 feet from here, roughly here, to Locust, and about 700 feet to there.
Yeah, but he's gonna do, he's gonna build 500 feet of roadway.
I'm about 150 feet roughly from the edge of my property here to where his lot begins on the other side.
So who owns the land across the street? Do we have any property?
He owns all the way to about here, and then there's a small little piece that Landis or whatever his name owns, I believe his 20 acres up there.
Well, the next guy that comes in, we're just gonna have to keep going.
I just want the board to be aware of, you've approved 500 feet coming this way with 18 feet of roadway pavement. Now you're gonna have about 150 feet, between 150 feet and 300 feet of nine-foot roadway that his way is today, and then you're gonna pick up another 18-foot roadway, so you're gonna have something in between that doesn't connect the two roadways.
Well, I think at this point, with what he is doing, I think it's consistent with what we've been asking people to do.
And that's perfectly fine, but I just want you to be aware of-
Oh, yeah, no, there's gotta be somebody else coming down the line that's gonna be coming in front of us for something, and I'm hoping eventually we have that paved. I mean, this is still a big chunk of land over there that we can assess some improvements in finishing that road, connecting the two pieces together.
Well, you just mentioned somebody has a 20-acre piece out there with frontage.
Yeah, somebody's gonna come along to try and do something with their land in there, because they're, it's not gonna, they're gonna sit there and pay taxes on it. So they're gonna be coming in with some sort of subdivision. At that point, quite honestly, you're gonna end up with probably the whole length of this road all meeting totals, because that's the other thing. For them to actually do something with their land, they're gonna have to upgrade this, because this is only a two-rod road. And so they're gonna need to have that additional right-of-way and improved improvements made in order to be able to satisfy the load that they're gonna be putting on it.
Is there any access to that 20 acres of Locust Street?
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so they have to-
They're gonna have to use this one here.
On Sandy Hill, you've approved that 18-foot roadway, the minimum stated roadway. Now you have subdivision that comes off of that 18-foot roadway that's gonna meet the rules and regs, and have 22 feet of pavement. But was that approved? It's gonna come in front of you again, eventually, so you'll have the same situation there. And it's fine, as long as you understand, you know-
I mean, short of the town floating bonds to, you know, to do these road improvements themselves, or, you know, hitting the people with bediments along the way there.
We're getting this.
You're getting this floor, but-
I suggested the town do the whole thing and charge bediments 20 years ago, but-
I can see they didn't listen to you, huh?
It's hard sell. All right, tell me again what you would like to do for us, and what water and sewer are probably-
I think that we're at the point where we have their comments, we are basically suggesting that the vote by the board, at least if you say that we're going to do it in accordance with the comments that were received, at least leave a little bit of room in there on the water one, with some phraseology that would say, unless otherwise agreed with the water department, or something. In other words, if we can work out how that last 300 feet in there is not something that he has to do himself, maybe he can work it out with the water department where they work together on it. But I don't think it's something that the board really needs to make it solely his burden, but we're not asking you to not vote in that way. Basically, if you vote that have to satisfy the water department and sewer as per their letters, unless-
For us, I think it's, you know, Mr. Jim, I think it's gonna be easier for us to do it that way.
Yeah.
You guys deal with it?
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have to deal with it anyway, if, you know, no matter what we say, they're-
Well, if we say you don't have to put water in, period, they're gonna say no to building permits, right, Bob?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because it doesn't meet the, they don't have enough for wells, so.
So if you say they're gonna satisfy the water and sewer department, then, you know, at least it gives a chance for him to look at that issue a little bit closer with them and maybe work something out. Because we don't know whether or not that other guy's ever gonna do anything coming from Locust. So for him to have the burden of 300 feet, that may not happen. You know, just, you know, it doesn't mean-
With the amount that you're doing right here, right, you know, now, and I think, you know, I know you only wanted one lot, I myself feel a little better that it's two, because it's not as much pain for doing the improvements.
It just makes his lot smaller than what he really wanted it to be, but that's what he ended up with.
You know, and if this guy comes down and we have this section, somebody eventually is gonna be doing that little section. If you can, you know, if you can satisfy the water department, I mean, no matter what, if you do 300 feet, 310 feet, you're still gonna have a dead end.
Yeah.
So if the guy doesn't come from that other end- So if the guy doesn't come from that other end, which he probably will, 'cause I think it's a couple of, I don't know, just seeing transactions, I think it's been.
Well, it seems to be it.
There's another lot before the guy that you approved, between the one in the corner and him. The guy in the corner actually owns another lot there coming down. So I don't know whether, you know, you can make it his responsibility to pick up the rest of that lot, you know, because he hasn't done any improvements. Just get the benefit out of it.
Well, I have some notes and we can go through them. General conditions for approval.
Can I?
Yes.
Real quick, a couple of things. Where is the hydrant gonna be located? You gonna put a hydrant in here? And the water department did not have a problem with where it's being proposed. The hydrant's right at the, right here, at the end of the proposed build-out? Right there. Okay, with a two-inch bleeder. I did receive comment from Ed Buckley today. He was a little bit, he'd rather see 12 inches of gravel instead of eight with four inches of dense grade on top of that. Now you may have adequate gravel in place already, but he wants to see at least 12 inches of adequate gravel for four-inch dense grade coalesced on top of that. Probably Tom, guy. Bring it to your attention as we ask.
Can we, can we put in there that they can maybe do a couple of borings with the engineer and with Ed Buckley on site to check it before they go in?
Whatever you're comfortable with. I'm just bringing you that information until Buckley tells me to make that file as a presentation.
So 12 inches with four inches of top of dense grade?
Compacted.
Have you done any test borrows out there at all?
No.
If Mr. Buckley's asking for it, then Mr. Buckley must have made us do that on the last section, Bemilla's piece.
Was Mr. Stolti back there then?
Oh, that's right.
And then the other thing that I wanna bring to your attention is, we should probably have some kind of signage that denotes that it's not a throughway or a private way. At some point on that plan, I'm not sure where, we can have discussion as to a location, but we should put some kind of sign so that the public doesn't access this road.
There's a sign, when you come in from Locust Street now, once the pavement ends, there's a sign there that said road is closed. I had seen it last time we talked about this. And it's there. I saw it this afternoon.
Through a street until all this roadway is totally constructed and it isn't through a street.
Yeah, we talked about that, on all private ways requirement signs.
What the sign you're talking about seems to satisfy the Locust access. You talk about a similar sign going the other way?
I'd say something off of Locust Street.
What are you saying, that one is there?
There is one that says road closed. I don't know if that's legitimate or if the owner of the house there just put it in.
What's that?
Road closed and private way.
It's just a private.
No, I understand. It's probably something the guy who owns the house put up himself. I don't think it was something the town did.
All right, so a private way sign? Or something that says not a throughway?
Only like 60 bucks I had to buy one. Don't put it up yet.
Does that actually stop people from going?
Doesn't matter. It's just, it satisfies, it satisfies our requirement.
Both sides? Both ends?
I think just off of Locust Street, you're not gonna get a lot of traffic off of the cul-de-sac.
It's the same, exactly the same. Because the parents come through for their kids 'cause the school's on the other side. So around 3 o'clock, there's about half dozen people go through and then come back.
Yeah, and I believe that because when the piece across or first piece on the left-hand side, when that was coming in front of us for a subdivision, there was quite a few people from Tirol Road, well, the subdivision, saying that they cross, they do cross through there. But just put a, just, I would say, like Bob said, on Locust Street side, just put a private, private way. I mean, it's coming off the main road, the other end's coming off of a subdivision. If they're in the subdivision to go through it, they already know it, you know? Did you have anything else, Bob?
Yes, it's all I have.
Because I'd like to just add that when you're doing the construction, seeing it's not a subdivision, that the engineer is out there for doing an ASBIL and providing an ASBIL plan when you're done to the town. And also just stamping your ASBIL saying that the plan was, the work was done according to the plan that we approved.
I can do that to what I've seen.
And I'm asking you to just, if this isn't a subdivision, but if it was a subdivision, we would be, we would be doing, you'd be doing the same thing. So I'm asking, I don't, it's gonna be kinda hard for us to say, okay, go and put eight inches of material down, but unless we.
All right, he's gonna have, we're gonna have to, I'll have to coordinate with him periodically just to be able to.
Yeah, it's only 600.
Get progress is going across.
600 feet of roads, I'm sure you're not.
Yeah, that won't take.
It's not like it's.
And the purpose of the ASBIL also is to make sure that they're within the two-rod road.
And so we have a file for water and sewer department, you know, for future and for anybody else across the street. We have an ASBIL from, I believe, all the way down. It's not a requirement or just, no. What I'm asking next is, maybe we could find, so we don't have all these different plans, would it be possible to take a plan that we have on file, if we do have a plan on file, and add to it? Am I asking for too much?
Add what to it?
If Bemilla, we know Bemilla did water and sewer over here, right? We've got manholes, catch basins, oh, not catch basins, manholes. So if we have, we're doing this and he's putting the sewer in and he's putting the water in, can we, is there a plan on file or should we just do a separate plan and a separate plan and a separate plan and?
I wouldn't have that planned in the building department. Maybe Ed would add to the highway department, we could ask.
I mean, we have whatever we have because we did his work. So I mean, whatever ACAD file we have, we can show it added on to it, so you have that. We'll print it up with his turned on.
You know what I mean? Even if the, just so.
I'm sure, we have his already, so we just, when we do that ASBIL, we can give you a version that's just his, but we can print out a version that shows it in relation.
Tying into, what you're tying into.
Because we did that first house too on, on.
Okay, good.
The first one that, off the cul-de-sac too.
Then you have it all.
I don't have that 300-foot stretch though.
That's all I would like to add to that.
All right, does anybody else have anything to add? I have a list of things to go over, which we, I think we've pretty much talked about. Site work shall not commence until all necessary federal, state, and local permits are issued at standard. Roadway improvements must extend the entire distance for the required lot frontage. Sewer service shall be extended to lots 1, 2, and 3 according to conditions set forth and required by the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
You have this letter, right, from the Sewer Commissioner?
Yes. Is that the one dated today?
Dated April 4.
April 4, yep.
As, I guess I don't have that. As set forth in, again, an April 2 letter? There's an April 4 now?
It's a separate one, it was in the package from Maureen.
Okay, as set forth in, in the April 4, 2019 letter from the Sewer Commissioner. Minimum thickness of 12-inch of gravel filled maintained throughout the proposed layout, four-inch of compacted dense grade top correspondent. All roadway material and installation methods must be approved by the Highway Superintendent. Water line must be installed as per Rainham Center Water District requirements as set forth in their letter of April 1, 2019.
You have that one also?
Yes. As Larry mentioned before, Mr. Chairman, if you wanna take out the attachment of letter and that gives them the opportunity to negotiate further with the water department.
Okay. All right, take out the letter and just water line installed as per Rainham Center Water District requirements, so whatever you can talk them into. Tirol Road remain a private roadway in that it will not be maintained by the town of Rainham. No building permits issued until all improvements are completed and approved by the highway department and the planning board. Fire hydrants shall be installed as per Rainham Fire Department requirements. Any additional lots to be serviced by this roadway will require installation of pavement as specified by the Rainham Highway Superintendent. All legal notice fees paid in full prior to endorsement of the plan. Sign indicating private way or similar shall be installed near Locust Street on Tirol Utility installations shall be as per sewer department and water department specifications. Roadway width of 18 feet maintained throughout the layout with two-inch stone shoulders for drainage on either side. And your ASBIL plan will show the tie-in to the abutting parcel.
So, Mr. Chairman, so item number 10 says that, so we have a minimum roadway requirement that we voted on back in 2017, which required asphalt paving. Item number 10 and the plan would indicate that there's no asphalt being proposed.
Yeah, these are limits.
Are you approving this without asphalt? And if there is asphalt for the future, is there any asphalt condition you wanna add besides item number 10?
I am willing to approve this without the requirement for asphalt at this time.
I do.
John?
With the amount of work that's being done.
Yeah, John?
I guess so, it seems, it seems great to everyone.
Okay.
So just keep in mind that you required asphalt for the gentleman on the other end of the road. I'm not sure how these improvements are any different than his, but I just want you to be aware that it's two different approvals.
I appreciate that. Should we not be consistent?
Well, the other end of the road, my opinion on that is, you have, you're stuck. You don't have anybody that is gonna be building before him, across from him, around him for us to.
I'm not saying you should, I just wanted to make you aware.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So that item number 10 condition, what's the requirement on anything else that happens on this roadway will trigger asphalt paving to be installed throughout the roadway? I'm not sure if you wanna add language to that effect.
If I, if I could, you might also in that say that will require a full layout and pavement. In other words, because anything beyond this point is gonna have to go from a two-rod road to being.
Well, I don't wanna get into, we can't, no.
I think if you get another forming lot off of this road, you can probably continue with the same roadway, but if you get a third lot subdivision off of this in that northern part, you might have to have this roadway built out to a different.
It's gonna be, you can't say full, 'cause then now we're gonna be going and disturbing everything that we've had him do and the other guy do and continuing to make improvements the way we've been making improvements.
Yeah, that's true.
Finish, let's finish so we have something done and, because we'll be in the same situation that this gentleman's in. You know, he's got, he had to divide two to make it worthwhile. Somebody comes in, they're not gonna do it. And our goal is to get it, get it all done.
Can I comment on that? No permits until all the roadwork is done?
Talked to Mr. Chairman.
Is that what you said? No building permits until all the roadwork is done?
Right.
Because that's not, that's not what the other gentleman had, 'cause he's got, he's got a building permit, hasn't done. And that puts a lot of, a lot of risk on my end to put a road in and then I walk in for a building permit and they, no, now you gotta do this or you gotta do that.
Well, I think what we've done in the past.
I'm not saying just the building part, but I mean, any department.
An occupancy permit? No? So does the other guy have a building permit for his house?
If that's the way you handle the pass, I don't think it's a good, one good way to do it.
What if one was, what if one had to be held until the other one? The other one could be built on. You know what I'm saying? So you're holding basically one of the lots back until that other work is done.
Yeah, we'll hold Lot 3.
Or 2 or 3, which one? Which one more likely you'd be working?
The one in the middle, you can hold.
He's gonna want this one held because he doesn't have a house drawn, but.
The one in the middle you could hold and he would be fine with that? So that.
Until the road is.
Obviously, no.
What happens when you, yeah, I'm.
I wouldn't have any water until they, until, you know, the utilities are in anyway, so.
Well, I know, but you can be, you could get a building permit, stop building tomorrow while you're getting your water and sewer, but we still might not have the road done. You know, it's not gonna give him any thing to go by when you want your occupancy permit.
Well, if you were doing a subdivision, we'd require a bond.
Yeah, I just, yeah. I just don't have that kind of capital to risk on something that, you know.
Well, at the point of occupancy, you'd either have it.
Occupancy, no problem, but.
So what about if it's an occupancy? He's not gonna be able, and that gives Bob the leverage, you're not giving him occupancy unless it's done.
It's up to Bob.
So you don't have any leverage when you hold, when you hold the occupancy permit?
No.
Give you a cash deal, guy goes, pit people who live in the house, you got no recourse and you don't have the road.
You got $500,000 house sitting there and you go off to a judge and tell him your story and.
You can buy a bond. I mean, the bond's not, it's not gonna cost you the amount of road.
You need to have some level of improvement before you wish to build it.
Insurance company will give you a bond on the road. Especially when you have a recorded plan that you're gonna have recorded.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, it's not like they're giving you a bond for, they'll attach it to the plan. And it's not gonna be, for 600 feet, it's not gonna be a big bond.
My issue is that, and I doubt other things, they seem to change, you know, as far as, you know, all of a sudden, you know, somebody else comes into the DBW who wants the road down a little bit or something.
No, 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 no.
This is what it is.
Once we approve the plan.
But what he's saying is that if they post a bond, an assurance that the road will be completed, then they're able to release both laws.
As long as I know.
Yeah.
So how, I think if, what you were reading, what you were saying about the road needs to be completed, I think you could just add to that. No?
I keep it the way it is. When he wants a building permit, he can come in and get a modification for that particular condition. At least some improvements would have to be started on the roadway.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, you know, and once we have a level of comfort that he's made some progress, then you can release that condition.
Okay, I'll take both of us. No, I feel, you know, I.
Keep it the way it is.
Not that I don't trust you, but I'm here to protect the town and when we start letting building permits go and temporary occupancies and so on, things just drag forever and don't get done. So I think we're gonna look out for the town and if things change in the future or again you've got some of the work done and there's a comfort level, then we can talk about it.
Well, obviously the surge in the water would have to be in.
Yep.
And then at that point, you're working with him, you're doing the ASBIL and you'll come up with a cost estimate that you can supply and then bring it to the board and at that time.
Whatever the remaining work is at that point.
Right. And then you're not bonding the whole thing down, no.
And the other problem is if somebody else does develop one of those other lots in there.
They're not gonna until we're, until they come in front of us.
Right.
It's not like it's gonna happen overnight. Somebody comes in front of us, the road's still not. Somebody comes in front of us, the road's still not done. You know, we had the same problem with Sandy Hill. We made...
No, I just thought that they might have to do some improvements to the, further improvements to the road and that would...
Well, what we did on another similar case like this, we, we told them, "It doesn't matter. If you don't build this road and the next guy comes in, he has to build the road. This is approved, it's gonna be recorded at the registry. Somebody has to build the road. We approved it, it doesn't matter if the guy down here, if he wants to build, you know, houses across the street, this is what we approved. Plus, pavement. So, if somebody else comes in and this isn't done, then they're gonna have to do this plus the pavement. So, it's gotta, it's gonna get done one way or the other.
What do you think is the wording of that?
For full disclosure, we've done that, the board has done that in the past, allowed building permits to be issued, we're holding on occupancy permits, but it's a separate slope, but I suggest we don't do it anymore.
No, okay, but I'm saying, so in terms of the wording, so when, um, lots will not be released until...
I'd say keep the wording as it is. Get the roadway started. When you're at the point where you think you wanna get a building permit, we'll see where you're at and we'll, we'll place a, a bond amount on it and we'll go from there. If, all you've done is cleared trees and put a, put a trench in, then you're not gonna get a building permit.
No, no, I was...
But if you just, you know, if your gravel's in and you just need the dense grade, some compacting and some shoulder work, um, but if you, if you wanna get a building permit the way it is now and try and say you're gonna make the improvements after the house is ready to be occupied?
No, I guess, I...
I wouldn't even start it until the utilities are in. It was just more insurance off on my end.
Well, now you get a condition. If you can get around the condition, then we'll issue, you know, we'll, we'll issue...
Well, then it gets done now, unless there's even the talk of it.
So, there's a little flexibility, that's all. And, can I just...
Yeah, can if you think it, I mean, just to...
If you think you should.
Just to clarify, because we're gonna...
Okay.
On, on number ten, uh, says any additional lots serviced by this roadway will require the installation of pavement. Well, we technically haven't split this up yet, right? This is a, this plan is for the road, so I think we should just clarify any additional beyond the three proposed lots.
Well, I think more, this, this plan does show all three lots, so, all the two new lots, so...
It does, but they're not watching it, because next...
Any additional lots serviced by this roadway other than the lots one, two, and three on the proposed road build-out site plan?
That's all.
Okay.
Right.
Good thing you got an attorney present.
Yeah.
Did you write that down? Say it again.
Any additional lots?
Old lot. Monday has to be a lot needed one.
Twenty on ten? Number ten?
Number ten.
Okay, so we have any additional lots?
Serviced by this roadway.
Okay.
Other than, other than lots one, two, and three shown on proposed road build-out site plan will require the installation of pavement to be, to be as specified by the Rainham Highway Superintendent.
Okay, it's, it's the same wording there, right?
Yep. Anybody else want to add anything?
No, you had, you added the engineer's as-built plan, right?
As-built is gonna show a tie-in to the abutting parcel. Okay? We understand each other?
I understand.
All right, um, the plan itself, anybody have any issues with?
Nope.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the plan entitled "Proposed Road Build-Out Site Plan, Assessor's Map Twelve Lot Two Three Nine K at eight ninety-six Locust Street, Rainham." Is that the address on it? It's not a Tarral Road address?
I mean, I don't know how that's gonna work, because I'm eight six nine Locust, but the, the new one that's, was just approved, I think, is three eight...
So, you, unless you want, unless you want to change your existing address?
Can I change the other two lots as a different address?
Those two lots are gonna be Tarral Road addresses.
They will be Tarral, so I can leave mine and then just make those Tarral.
The only thing you can do is change your address to, to Tarral Road, if not, you'll have the Locust Street address in the middle of a couple of them, so, or that's just the way it works.
We probably should change yours.
Change it more.
Probably are gonna...
Prepared for Barnett Bornstein, Silva Engineering Associates, dated March eighth, two thousand nineteen, um, subject to the conditions of approval that the board has already talked about. Second for discussion?
Second.
Anybody have anything to discuss? No? And there's a twenty, twenty-day right of appeal on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Unanimous?
Yes.
Unanimous. Yeah, should we do the Form A or should we wait?
I think that if you do the Form A, you should hold the mile hour until such time as the appeal period is over.
I think we probably shouldn't vote on it till the appeal period's over, because the lots don't really exist yet.
The only problem with it is, uh, the statutory twenty days, is that would come into play?
I'd say just hold it and put it on the agenda for our meeting once this is...
Give us, give us a, uh, extension on that.
All right, I'll give you an, an extension until the end of the appeal period to actually endorse the, the Form A plan? All right? That way we get past the twenty-day issue.
Well, we have it, we have a meeting on May second, so make it May fifth, May eighth, something like that.
Sure. On my birthday, you got a meeting, huh, on May second, huh?
Single the mile.
Because the twenty days are gonna take us over into beginning of May anyway.
So, we grant an extension to the board to May fifth in order to act on the Form A plan?
May, May fifth will be on a weekend, I presume?
May fifth is after your meeting, right?
Second is a Thursday, the third is a Friday, the fourth, fifth should be a Sunday.
Oh. All right, so what do you want to make it? Gonna make it the sixth?
Sure.
Okay. So, on May second, they'll be able to, the appeal period in the past, they'll be able to, um, sign the originals for the improvements. We have to bring my law in for that. And then they have the other my law, which they, at that point, can endorse that one.
Okay, but there's not another twenty days once they endorse it?
No, no, that, that, Form A is not a, there's no appeal period.
Okay?
Yes, that's fine.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a formal vote?
No, we're gonna vote on the Form A after the twenty days.
But you had the formal vote on the...
Yes, we did, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the one you gave, the plan?
Okay, um, at six o'clock, we had Matria Subaru, no one was here?
I'd like to present a team so that we can get some...
Okay. I don't mind.
Should I? Did I get it?
I didn't know if you might have had it.
Yes. Right, while we, uh, work on that, we did have a public hearing scheduled for Riverwalk A R C. And we have a letter from Attorney Ryan Profit representing Rainham Riverwalk LLC Adult Retirement Community. And the engineers are still working, and he asks that we continue the public hearing until April eighteen, two thousand nineteen? What's the time to act on Riverwalk?
Um, May twenty ninth. No, make the...
Okay. I make a motion that we continue the public hearing until April eighteen, two thousand nineteen at six thirty-five?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Abstention?
I'm not here. Abstain.
Okay, invoices, I sent one down?
Yeah, sent it.
Uh, we don't have any minutes. Quiet night, we don't seem to have any correspondence. Planning coordinator updated, busy, serpent update?
Uh, just a couple of main issues that came up at the last meeting. Number one, uh, on, um, South Coast Rail, they're at the twenty-five percent completion planning stage, so that seems to be proceeding. And, uh, there was an update on Route one thirty-eight. I guess, and, and I didn't see any, any, uh, notifications on it, but the, but the plan had moved out of twelve twenty-one into twelve twenty-two. So, what they did is, they revised the plan, and instead of the improvements going all the way up to the eastern line, it's now only going up to four ninety-five. And, which is, allows them to bring it back to, uh, twenty twenty-one. And the other update was that the price had increased. I guess originally it was like five, six million dollars, well, now it's eleven million dollars to get it up to four ninety-five for twenty twenty-one.
Wow.
Yeah, those are the two significant items of the night.
Yeah.
Oh, and the annual meeting is, uh, in, in May, anyone's invited to attend, I believe it's the, uh, the mayor, I forget what town it is, Mayor Fairhaven maybe, who's gonna be the, the principal speaker, and it's gonna be held at, uh, restaurant, it's at the road of your middle borough.
Byerside?
Byerside, thank you. I think it's forty dollars per person.
He came back, I don't know if he, I don't know if he's listening, if he wants to say something.
Mr. Andrade had a question about how I got my, um, lot. So, I just wanted to submit the, um, Rainham Register from nineteen ninety-nine with the Planning Board and the Appeals Board roster.
Oh, you, you don't have to, uh...
We're not gonna take your occupancy permit away.
I know how you got your lot, I saw her at the registry. So, I'm just, it's got nothing to do with you or the other two people that are living there. Has something to do with the subdivision that was originally approved, was my, there's a subdivision that's originally approved, and that's what this, what they brought in front of us, that's what it's based on, is the original approval that came forward, and we told them that they can have that as long as, if they can build it, they have the right to build it. So, build it without any conditions, or with what was approved. But since looking it up, I see these three lots that got waiver frontages.
Right.
Did those three lots, where did those three lots come into? Because it wouldn't have been approved on the original plan. So, that's my question. Have we three lots more than we should be on this plan? I don't know. So, it's got nothing to do with you or your lot or anything else. Trust me. I saw, I saw how long you've been there, you've got a variance, that's got nothing to do with me, nothing to do with the planning board. My concern is, our approval from the original is based on the original plan, and there never would have been a plan showing three lots with fifty-foot frontage, those were just vacant. So, that's all we have to figure out. I'm sorry if you've got the wrong impression.
My only concern was how they were gonna finish the subdivision now that the sewer connection is made.
Yeah.
Because sewer commission was really the only thing that helped me get through the construction of that.
Them doing the road, yeah. Yeah, I think we have a good, I think they're gonna supply us, or Ed Buckley has the information, but they still have a long way to go, so we've been very close from the very beginning on that entire development, on inspections and, uh...
No idea?
It's been a...
I appreciate it.
Been a long, uh, trust me, there isn't anything that gets done over there that's not inspected by Highway Department or Department. So, yeah, sorry, I, you know, I didn't mean to give you the wrong, wrong idea that I was gonna...
Yeah, we have his house boarded up right now.
You were on that board.
I saw his name, he signed, but he had no choice, because it had a variance, so...
Actually, we started with, uh, brick and then we built the board.
Okay.
Subaru. Planning coordinator update or Subaru, which one you want to do?
I'll do this, uh, request for abbreviated site plan. I don't have one plane, so they gotta put it in the middle and maybe...
Sure.
So, Subaru dealership wants to do an addition and add parking spaces, which triggers site plan approval. Uh, we have two additions, two additions to the building that both would trigger site plan approval, because they're both over twelve hundred square feet, plus they're relocating parking spots. If you see the parking spots that are here, they're relocating and putting parking spots here, plus they're building this parking area here. So, all this triggers site plan approval. So, uh, they came into my office, right now what they have here in this, in this parking area here, if you can see the dash line, there's a detention basin here, and there's a detention basin here. Their proposal is to eliminate this detention basin, fill it in, build a parking lot here, and then build this larger detention basin, as you see outlined here. So, with the abbreviated, uh, site plan approval, um, this drainage system, parking lot drainage and the new detention basin, um, would be reviewed by Conservation's engineer, Mr. Azu Intenaro, and that information will be forwarded to the Planning Board, instead of going through and having two different engineers review the plan. Uh, I thought this is a good candidate for abbreviated site plan approval. This is gonna be one of those where they drive the car in, drop the car off, kind of, you know, service area here, and this is for storage for pots in the back here. So, this plan is gonna be, um, additional parking spaces, relocation of parking spaces, new drainage, and two additions to the building.
Get rid of this one, I'm voting against it.
I know, we're working on that.
Make a motion to approve it, to come in front of us for, as a minor modification?
Well, as an abbreviated...
I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, abbreviated site plan, uh, drawn by SciTech Inc., Abdatneth. This is Matria Subaru, twelve fifty-five, New State Highway.
Put the date on the plan.
Two fourteen.
Two fourteen nineteen second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Got a update for us on general things around town?
Last week, we had a preliminary, uh, department head meeting on the Children's Development Center, which is, uh, gonna be on your agenda for the next meeting on April eighteen. Uh, that's, uh, three sixty-six South Main Street, which used to be the old structure that was demolished, it's gonna be, um, built into a, a children's, uh, development preschool educational facility, as allowed by zoning variance, uh, by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
They needed a variance for that?
It did not meet zoning, I, I made a determination, it did not meet zoning, they went to the zoning board and they got relief from my decision.
Okay.
There was, there was a notice that she was going before a conservation on it, do you know what that was all about?
Yeah, she has conservation issues, because there's a river behind the property, so she needs to get approval for conservation. It's very compact.
Is she, is she looking for a variance in the buffer zone or anything like that?
No, you'll see her plan, if you get a chance to review for the next meeting, it's very compact. It's a small building, one little building, not a lot of parking, she's not using a lot of the back of the property, so it's a small condensed plan, it's not a big sprawly building with a big, big park, it's a very small park. There's no bus traffic there, anything like that. So, uh, that was brought forward, uh, to all the department heads for their comments, so that you'll have their comments for the next meeting. I did have a site walk visit with the fire department to the old Bennys, uh, which is also gonna be probably coming in front of you for abbreviated site plan, uh, or site plan not required, I'm gonna let you make the decision once I get the renderings. They are relocating two entrances on the building and splitting the building in half for two tenants. So, there'll be an entrance on each end of the building, full remodel, um, parking reconfiguration, although they're not, they're not proposing any new parking lot or parking lot asphalt or parking lot drainage. Uh, so I asked them to put as much information on a plan with a rendering, and we'll bring it in front of you as soon as we have that information, and they're actually, you know, they're in a tight timeframe as, as most people are, so you're probably gonna see that probably at the next meeting also, which is shaping up to be a long, long meeting with a lot of...
What is, uh, what's drainage like over there? I'm trying to remember, it just all runs down onto forty-four.
It's basically sheet flow to Route forty-four on the front, and there is some, some detention area in the back that I think will, I believe takes care of some roof drains. Uh, but as far as the parking lot, there's, uh, how old's that building? Sixties?
Fifties.
Even earlier?
Sixties, and... It used to be, used to be on Court Street? Or was that it? Main Street Broadway?
It is, by the way, entirely in the town of Rainham. It's only a small little section of the parking lot that's in the town of Taunton.
Oh, yeah, because of the way that angle runs.
Other than that, I'm still yellow lining some of the rules and regs. We're gonna probably have to have a, you know, designate half an hour and a couple of meetings to review some of the rules and regs unless we want to do a special meeting.
I think everybody should look at them because I've been highlighting a lot of items on various sections and we've been talking about doing it for a long time and.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that difficult. Most of the stuff is gonna be, we're gonna eliminate. I don't think we're, you know, we're gonna be adding a lot of, a lot of, a lot of language to it, but, you know, some of the stuff is antiquated like you've been talking about and is not necessary.
Whatever it's worth, I prefer some of meetings to discussion. Just so that we can concentrate just on that and not have to worry that, you know, we're here till 11:30.
I tend to like that, too.
Well, to break it out, you know, today's three Thursdays in a row, I mean, how much can we take of each other?
Well, we've done it, we just did it, right?
Yeah, we'll, we can plan that in the near future.
Plus what we've done in the past, too, is share the changes as you go, you know, and then people have time to review them if you have.
Yeah, we can, we can, you know, get them down to a couple of pages and then look at the, you know, the total number of edits all at the same time and then go from there.
Just don't share with all the members on the board, anybody answers, because that's, that's not allowed by the open law.
I'm sorry I say that.
If you send an email and you put all the members of the board and if one person answers back, you're violating the open meeting law.
All right, not to violate any laws.
Seeing the town has been so interest, so up to date, we might as well. Maureen sends us an email and it's an email to all the members of the board and one member answers the board, even if it's, if it's on an issue that is coming in front of the board, and somebody answers to what Maureen's email is, then.
Well, yeah, because, because we get stuff in from the engineer, I try to review it before I get here.
But just don't respond. Maureen can send this stuff out, but if one member.
If Maureen says, let me know that you got this, I can't say.
I was gonna say, she asked for a response.
There was a, well, there was a thing John sent out, John sent back an email, a response, he was the only one and.
What item was that? Was the?
It was a question on, I don't remember.
But you, you would.
I'll send things out separately.
Do not respond.
That should be, that should be challenging because that's.
I'll print, I'll print out the, I'll print it out so you can, you can see what it says.
That's gonna happen on a daily basis with different.
We're, we're.
Highly scrutinized these days.
We're in this scrutinized, so we, you know, we all want to make sure.
I was gonna give you a hug tonight, but.
Well, no hugs. No hugs. And we have sockets. That angle looks cool. I'm leaving, we haven't adjourned.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, did we do a motion to adjourn?
Well, we didn't. Kind of wandered off a bit.
Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye?